Good evening, everybody. Welcome to the first meeting this year. Roll call, please.
Barkley, Walters, Gordon.
Here.
Ewer, Benner.
Here.
Barton.
Here.
Crum.
Here.
Thompson.
Here.
All right, deification will be given by Jennifer Jones from Hazsville United Methodist Church.
Let us pray. Lord, we thank you for this new beginning and this new year. And we ask, Lord, that you would guide and bless all that we do and help us to continue to seek your will here in Hazsville. We pray this in Jesus' name, amen.
Amen. Please join me in a pledge of allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. All right, next we have presentation and approval of minutes. A, minutes of December 29th, 2022.
Can I make a motion? We approve the minutes of December 29th.
Second.
We have motion and a second to approve the minutes of December 29th, 2022. Councilman Crum, do you have a... You have discussion? No. Okay. Is there any discussion? Question, please.
Gordon.
Yes.
Benner.
Yes.
Barton.
Yes.
Crum.
Upstate.
Thompson.
Upstate. All right, next I'd like to add an agenda item. Is the change order, it's on your desk, it's a change order for Wire Hungerford Waterline Project. We'd like to add that to 6E, just under Other Business. Would somebody like to make a motion for that? Councilman Crum?
I'll make a motion that we add the change order for Wire Hungerford to 6E on the agenda.
Second.
We have motion and a second to add Agenda Item 6E to the agenda. Is there any discussion? Question, please.
Gordon.
Yes.
Benner.
Yes.
Barton.
Yes.
Crum.
Yes.
Thompson.
Yes.
All right, item one, we have citizens to be heard. Hey, Jennifer Bane, Hazsville Pride.
Hi, councilmembers, mayor, staff. I'm Jennifer Bane, this is Brenda Gibson. We are with Hazsville Pride. We are both officers in the organization. And we are here to talk about one of the hottest topics to breach us this past year in the Hazsville area, which is the exciting world of trash. So, we noticed that there was lots of conversations around trash and Hazsville Pride decided that we wanted to survey our community about their trash service and kind of get some information. And so what we're here today is to present that information to you and answer any questions you may have on it. So, the reason why Hazsville Pride was interested is that we'd heard a lot of conversation, both in person as well as our social community pages, talking a lot about inconsistent trash pickups, which I know you guys are well aware of, equitable rates, which were problematic, and then hazel road damage. And so the footnote there that I put in was that the Hazsville area has five different trash companies which service Hazsville. This is equivalent to approximately 78,000 car trips on most of our roads weekly, which causes damage in accelerated road conditions. So, it's important to note that while we do have kind of a licensing fee for any of the trucks that are coming down into Hazsville, it's not a lot, certainly not to cover the road damage that's occurring on a weekly basis here. Okay, next slide. The goal is to survey 10% of our households. That was about 450 respondents. We ended at 466. The survey ran from October 7th through January 2nd. And the survey was available on our Hazsville Pride Facebook page as well as our community pages, the two social pages. And we did offer paper copies, both at the library, Passages Salon. We also did events. Cash Saver right before Thanksgiving was a great one for us. Lots of people in our grocery store, it was great to see. As well as Village Christmas and Photos with Santa. So, big thank you to our community partners that allowed us to be able to host some of these surveys there. This is a copy, which I know is somewhat hard to see in a bit of an eye chart. You do have a printout as well for this particular page. This is a survey that we offered. It was 10 total questions. It looks like the 10th one didn't make it on the sheet there for some reason. But the 10th question was, how much do you pay? So, really what we asked was, what street do you live on? What's your zip code? To make sure they were within the area we were talking about. We asked if they were interested in bringing back the citywide cleanup the way that it was before when we did sort of more of a driveway pickup or bulky item disposal opportunity once or twice a year, if that would be interesting to them. We also asked that if the city of Hazsville could lower the amount that you pay for trash and offer consistent pickup, if that would be something you'd be interested in exploring. We gave them that same footnote that I gave you about the road deterioration because we thought it was important for people to note that that's part of why we're asking the question. We asked if they participated in recycling. What size of a trash cart do they have? Who they use as their trash company? Do you pay every month, every three months, and then of course, what they pay? The conclusion that we came up with from analyzing all this data was that respondents are interested in exploring the idea of either a preferred hauler or a citywide contract. 91% of respondents said that they would be interested in exploring that idea. 97% said that they were interested in bringing back citywide cleanup or bulky item disposal back the way that it used to be. That was easier, obviously, as we talk about our seniors, our disabled folks, people like me who don't have the luxury of having a pickup truck. It's somewhat harder to get things over to public works. So, they were interested in that. And on average, I just kind of pulled what it looked like and what the numbers were. From $29 to $140 is kind of where the basic average number sat. So, it is a very wide range, and that's the average. I wasn't even considering some of the outliers that we had. Waste Connections and Air Capital make up 74% of the trash haulers that are used by the respondents that we surveyed. Obviously, there's a bit of a change because Best Value was in there at one time. They're out. Those numbers have switched mostly over to Air Capital and we saw that as we had these kind of, this survey go through. On the next page, what we wanted to do was talk about what our neighbor cities are doing. So, what are the other municipalities around us are doing? Currently, preferred hauler citywide services are offered in Derby, Andover, Park City, Valley Center, Bel Air, Clearwater. And Mulvane City Council has also talked about discussing it as part of their 23 agenda items as well. Each of these cities offer either a citywide cleanup once or twice a year, bulky item disposal coupons, or if they're a smaller municipality, they offered a coupon to the dump for a thousand pounds or something like that. So, those are what were offered there. In your packet, which is not part of this particular, the presentation, I provided you some of the data that we were able to pull. And so if there's anything additional that you want on these things, I'm happy to provide them to you. This is kind of an eye chart and I'm sorry, there was no way to really pull this. But this was just going to give you an idea of the number of respondents per street. And that's all this is, just to kind of tell you who responded by their street. The next one was the trash survey zip code. You can't see that, but 67060 is obviously the largest respondents, which we anticipated. There was a few 67217s in there. These two charts are the ones I just told you about. That was the 91% that was interested in exploring an idea, 97% interested in citywide cleanup or bulky item disposal at their home. We talked about, do you participate in recycling? And 67% of respondents do not participate in recycling. And when we talked to these individuals, for the people that we did in-person surveys to, the reason why is the amount that they had to pay for recycling. So, they were not interested in an additional amount to pay for recycling and therefore didn't recycle. Not that they were against the idea, they just weren't going to pay for it. What size of trash cart you currently have? This one has a bit of dirty data in it. So, most people don't have any idea the size of their trash cart, period. 90 to 99 gallon is really the average. Some people about 60 to 69. So, you'll have some varying numbers in there. Trash, some of the trash companies do offer different prices depending on the size of cart that you want. If you get a smaller cart, however, you can't put extra trash up. If you have the 90 to 99 gallon, a lot of times you can put somewhere between four and 10 bags of extra trash out if you have it, but you have to pay for the highest, the biggest cart you can get. So, you'll see that number. I don't know that that's a really nice clean number for you, so I just wanted to be upfront. Who is your current trash company? We talked about that. That's all broken out by percentages, so you can see that if you're interested. Do you pay every three months or monthly? Some of the trash services, waste management, has gone to a monthly fee, just to kind of break it down, so it doesn't look so painful at the three-month mark. Some people, like Air Capital, do offer a yearly fee. So, there are some people participating in a yearly fee as well. There's the breakdown of that information. Other municipalities, I'm not going to go through these, I just want you to have the information. This is kind of when I called around and talked to other municipalities of what they were doing, what they offered, what those contracts look like. This is to give you a little bit of base information, so you have them. I do have Valley Center's contract. If you're interested in that, I'm happy to email that to you if you'd like to take a look at it. That last open-ended item, which was, how much do you pay? Had a giant variety of answers. And because it was open-ended, they could write whatever they wanted and some things weren't nice enough that I could put into this meeting. So, I tried to do a light comparison. And what I took was just people who said, I'm using this hauler. I'm using this 90 to 99 gallon trash cart, because that was the cleanest, and whether or not they were recycling or not recycling. And these charts will break down those prices for you. Sometimes, same hauler, same service, same size trash truck, same day, had a giant variety. Now, there are a few items that you could talk about as part of that data. Some of that is, maybe you have a senior discount. But what we learned is that even the senior discount seems to differ depending on the senior that's being serviced for some reason. Additionally, there is some people who maybe have two carts. And when we talked about that in person, we were able to note that. So, we could do the mathematics to put it down to one cart, so we could actually have the average still look at. But people who filled it out online didn't necessarily have that. We didn't think about that in advance, so we didn't put that in there. If they noted it, great, I did the math for them. If they didn't note it, then I can just, I just took the data the way that I have it. So, varying on Waste Connections with no recycling on that average-sized trash cart, it was $15 every three months up to $130. Now, the $15 I figured might be an outlier. I actually did talk to that person directly and it's $15, really? They're like, yeah, we just signed up and they gave us this for one year, they said. I thought, well, that's interesting. I pay about $92 and it was the same, same trash. And I was like, oh, that's interesting. Waste Connections for recycling, you can kind of see the difference, $29 to $160, depending. The next one is Air Capital. These are the only two I took a look at because this took care of 74% of respondents and I figured that would be kind of a good number to look at. If there's something else you want me to go data mine for you, I'm happy to do so. And I'm happy to give this information to you. This was all part of Survey Monkey. So, people who were able to take the surveys online did so. Other than that, the paper copies, we as Hazsville Pride went and translated those into what that would look like in Survey Monkey. Air Capital, the typical size, average-sized cart, no recycling. Average from $45 to $88. With recycling, $57, too. It will show 165. I believe that's an outlier. I believe it's $96 seems to be probably the most accurate there. So, based on that information, it does sound like this, the residents of the city of Hazsville would be interested in exploring an idea of a preferred hauler or a citywide contract if the council would be willing to explore that idea on their behalf. Can I answer any questions for you? Uh-huh. No questions? Okay.
Councilman Crum?
I'll so much have a question. I just wanted to thank you guys. And I do know that I just, my wife just told me this week, we got our bill for three months and our, this three months went up from 80-something to like $123. So... So, I, this is something that I would be in favor of. I know we talked about it before, we actually had a vote one time on it. We added on, I don't know how many years ago it was. And it was really close. The vote on that one, I think they just, we decided to leave it like it was, but the vote was really, really close. But that was also before we had other issues that are coming up and stuff. So, I, I would be in favor of at least exploring it.
Councilman Crum?
I just want to tell Jennifer thank you because she mined all that data. We had our meeting last Monday night and she mined it in two days to get the program together. It was tough.
And there are people that do know how the HOAs have gotten together and gotten a group trash service price. I mean, that word is getting out and they are astounded at how much cheaper an HOA has done than just the individual neighborhoods, you know?
And I think if you are interested in looking at that one slide that talks about what the other municipalities are doing, you can kind of see what they are paying and then you can see that vast difference to what you're paying versus what maybe some of the other cities with a preferred hauler or a program are paying. And then there's a lot of accountability that can happen there when we talk about consistent trash pickup. We didn't have that maybe with some of our franchise services, but if we were in a contract, we would have that ability to make sure that our residents are being taken care of.
Councilman Gordon?
Well, I'm agreeing with, with the other two council members. That I think this is something we need to look at. I definitely think it's something like, like Councilman Crum said before. This came to council quite a few years ago. We even put it to a vote and it, I'm a little short on memory, but it was, I mean, it was a real close vote. And I think it's something that we need to look at. Hey, I'm all for having cheaper trash service. You know, and then hopefully in the future, we don't end up with the situation that we had this last year. You know? So, I definitely think it's something we need to look into.
Yeah. Anybody have any questions or direction for staff? Or just have staff look into it? Or would you like to come up with things that you would like to see in the request, the RFP? And get back with like Will over the next, tell our next meeting and then we can put something together and then you can see what the RFP would look like. Councilman Benner?
No, but it's often, we always talk about the damage to streets that numerous trucks, multiple trucks do. Is there any way to quantify that or to figure out? How much damage are the trash trucks doing and how much of it is the Amazon trucks? And how much of it is Steve Crum's truck? I don't have a truck.
Based on this, based on the data we were able to pull, which is, we went and researched it, what we learned was it was 78,000 car trips weekly per trash truck. So, that would tell you if that trash truck is coming multiple times to town or there are multiple trucks or multiple services, what that number looks like. And that's where we came up with that 78,000.
78,000 trips.
78,000 car trips, yeah, per week.
Per trip.
Per truck.
The equivalent?
Yep.
Sorry, I wanted to make sure.
Yeah, it's a footnote on page two.
I'm just curious as to how that is measured. Is that measured because of the weight of the vehicle? Or is that what it is?
Yeah.
Tires on ground?
The starting and stopping.
Okay.
Starting, stopping, and the weight of the vehicle and the number of axles per vehicle.
Councilman Crum?
Would you send that Valley Center contract to Will so he can send it out to all of us?
I'd be happy to. I think the interesting part is that citywide cleanup, you know, we talk about beautification of Hazsville all the time. In fact, Hazsville Pride talks about it quite a, quite a bit. And we've always felt citywide cleanup, while I know it was a lot of work, we would like to see that as part of, if there's something that you guys are going to go investigate as part of a contract or preferred hauler situation, something that we could do. We know it's too expensive to do on its own, which is why we're not doing it anymore. But we believe residents have suffered not having that beautification project and therefore Hazsville suffered altogether. So, we think it is a great benefit as part of this package.
Definitely think it's something that can be put in the RFP. Councilman Crum?
That's, I would appreciate if we could go ahead and have staff, I don't know if you want me to make a motion on this, have them draw up an RFP draft so that we could take a look at it and possibly have an RFP to put out after the next meeting.
I'll see if I can do it.
Do we need to, do I need to make a motion?
Go ahead if you like.
I'll go ahead and make a motion that staff looks at an RFP for trash service and come up with a draft by our next meeting that we could take a look at.
That's cool, say that.
So, any discussion? Councilman Gordon, something you'd like us for?
I just had a question for Tony because we were talking about citywide cleanup. I know that we quit doing the, going around to the properties and picking up and we put the roll-offs at city. Did that work out pretty good? I mean, as far as, I know it's not quite as efficient or good as it was for going around in the neighborhood, but did we, I don't remember how well we did with that.
Yeah, so it's, it's being used quite a bit. Most people, when they come, they stack it, stack their debris just outside the bin so they don't have to load it. So, we have guys that have to load it with the Trac-O and we are probably filling a bin sometimes, you know, once a week sometimes, so. And that's right through now to the middle of winter, you know, it's utilized quite a bit.
Okay.
Any further discussion?
If I could, real quickly. My name is Kathy Marcano. I'm a fairly new resident to Hazsville. I just wanted to...
Could you step up to the microphone?
Oh, absolutely.
Are you, are you with Hazsville Pride?
No. No. I'm just a resident. My name is Kathy Marcano. I've been here for about 18 months. One thing that I would like to see you consider when you do this is, I'm a single person. I don't make near as much trash as my neighbors that have children or dogs or multiple family members living in their house. So, it'd be nice if you would take into consideration that I don't want to have to pay as much as everybody else that has five kids. So, if you could just maybe consider that when you stop and think about your RFP or maybe that I only have to pay to have mine picked up every two weeks. But don't forget the single people of Hazsville. That's all I want to say.
Alright, thank you.
To, to help her, as part of the municipalities, you'll see that there are some municipalities that do offer different cart sizes as part of that. So, that way they could, that way they could, and I'm not for sure if you heard me, but there, as part of the RFP, they can go in and ask for different sizes. There are a lot of the trash companies that do offer, even as a preferred hauler or a city contract, different-sized trucks, different-sized carts, and then that would change your pricing based on that. So, it doesn't necessarily have to be a citywide price. It can be an individual price depending on the size of your cart. So, there's a lot of differences in between here where either we can handle the billing, the, the company can handle the billing. You'll see that there's a lot of differences just within the contracts that I was able to pull for you. So, it really depends on what Hazsville wants and you guys can go make that request from them.
Good, thank you. Alright, question, please.
Gordon.
Yes.
Benner.
Yes.
Barton.
Yes.
Crum.
Yes.
Thompson.
Yes.
Alright, thank you and thank you, Hazsville Pride. Alright, next we have item two, approval of licenses and bonds. We have none. Item three, introduction of ordinances and resolutions. A, we have ordinance amending Chapter 3, Article 1, Section 3-117 and Chapter 3, Article 3, Section 3-308 regarding the hours of retail sales of cereal malt beverages and liquor on Sundays. So, this is what council asked staff to come up with a ordinance to, uh... This would allow the city of Hazsville to have what is allowed by the state of Kansas. It's what the council liked to do. Councilman Crum?
So, this is set up the same thing as the widest window that's already acceptable with the state?
For Sunday sales.
For Sunday, yes.
Yes.
Okay. Well, I know we had to hear one of the business owners here talking about this and I don't have a problem with it. I guess I'm curious, have we notified all the places in town that sell liquor that we may be doing this or is that just up to them to figure it out?
We can, if you'd like us to, everybody that's got a license, we can inform them of the change.
I would say if it passes, that would probably be a good thing to do. If there's no discussion, I'll go ahead and make a motion that we approve the ordinance amending Chapter 3, Article 1, Section 3-117 and Chapter 3, Article 3, Section 3-308 regarding the hours of retail sales of cereal malt beverages and liquor on Sundays.
Second.
Do I have a motion and a second to approve the ordinance change for cereal malt beverage sales on Sundays? Is there any discussion? Question, please.
Gordon.
Yes.
Benner.
Yes.
Barton.
Yes.
Crum.
Yes.
Thompson.
Yes.
Alright, next we have item four, notices and communications. A, governing body announcements. Councilman Crum?
Let's see, at the library, coming up tomorrow and Wednesday, so January 11th and 12th, the library will be closed. They're closed for some maintenance to the building and the staff is going through some trainings that the library will be closed the next two days. On the 12th, like most Thursdays, at 10:00 a.m. is parents', as teachers' storytime and then at 11:00 a.m. is parents', as teachers' toddler time. Coming up on the 16th is Martin Luther King Jr. Day. The library will be open on that day. Next, Lego Club is January 18th. Again, on the 19th, you've got the teacher, the parents', teachers' activities going on. They want, the library wants everybody to know, January 22nd is Chinese Lunar New Year and then it will be Year of the Rabbit. See if there's anything else. And January 28th at 1:00 p.m. is the Friends Annual Ham and Beans Potluck at the library. And Kansas Day is January 29th. They don't have anything listed on here yet, but oftentimes at the library, sometimes they have activities going on. I'll check to see if that's going to happen and if it does, make sure it's noted somewhere on Channel 7 or something perhaps. And then on January 30th, they have a 10:00 a.m. Move and Groove and that's a parents', teachers' activity as well. And that's what's going on at the library.
Alright, thank you. Any other council member have any announcements? I have one for the Senior Center. Some upcoming events. Blood pressure checks will be giving, will be given Tuesday, January 10th at 9:45 a.m. Monthly dinner will be Friday, January 13th at 6:00 p.m. Troubleshooting computer class will be Tuesday, January 17th at 2:00 p.m. A lunch outing on Tuesday, January 24th at 11:40 a.m. Commodities will be Thursday, January 26th. There will no, there will not be any commodities the month of February or March. The monthly breakfast will be Saturday, January 28th at 10:00 a.m. The Senior Center and Hazsville Hustle will be closed on the January 16th. Some recurring programs at the Senior Center. You have Domino's, Donuts, Coffee and Conversation, Chair Yoga, yoga, Billards, Bingo, Bunko, Steps, Cards, Drumming, Well Rep, Tai Chi, and Crafting Club. The Hazsville numbers for December, one way for last year was 243. For this year, it's 231. And for the total of the year, for the Hazsville Hustle, let's see, last year, sorry, for 2021, the total riders, one-way riders was 2,192 with 101 new riders. And for last year, for 2022, one-way riders, 3,316 and new registered riders was 112. Councilman Crum?
I forgot one, so we only have in one meeting a month. So, only have one other chance to get it because Swim to a Wish will be coming up. This year, it's the weekend of February 24th, 25th, and 26th. For those of you that might not know, it's the Hazsville Swim Club. The, the boys' campus swim team gets together and we'll get five boys and they will swim 20 miles each relay style over a weekend. They'll start about 4:00 o'clock in the afternoon on a Friday. We usually get done around noon or a little after on Sunday. So, they swim a total of 100 miles. All the money goes to Make-A-Wish. This will be our 11th year and last year, with our first 10 years of donations, we have raised just a little over $300,000 for Make-A-Wish in those 10 years. So, hoping to keep that up and be looking for more talk about that, hopefully in the newspaper and get some stories out and stuff like that. There'll be lots of ways to donate. You can come down to the pool and do it. You can do it, and it's also set up so you can do it online. We'll have t-shirts for sale like we do every year. Not sure how many teams will be joining us this year. Last year, we had five. And this year, we're hoping those same five and or maybe even a couple of others have talked about joining us as well. So, just keep that in mind, that's coming up the end of February.
Alright, thank you. Alright, next we have item B, Sedgwick County Fire Department, Station 34, monthly report. Item C, a thank you card from the Fall Festival Committee. Item C, A Thank You Card from the Fall Festival Committee. Item D, Regarding a New Business, which is FFMII LLC. Their new business has three sixty degrees tobacco and vapes. We have Economic Development Quarterly Report. Danielle?
Good evening, Mayor and Council. You have the Fourth Quarter Economic Development Report, which also includes the two thousand twenty-two totals on any applicable data. You'll see on page six that the home show is now on the first weekend of March instead of in February. Hayesville will again have a booth at that event. As a side note, I'll send out a request for volunteers closer to the date. Also on page six, I included participation numbers on events such as the Fall Festival, for the City Booth, the Halloween and Holiday Yard Contest, and Trick or Treat on Main Street. On page seven, under Marketing Campaigns and Promotions, you'll see I've added, in addition to our already ongoing campaigns, in two thousand twenty-three, we'll advertise Party in the O-six-O and Fall Festival in the Kansas Magazine. It will have basic information and a QR code that goes to those event pages. And then on page nine, there's two updates to the two thousand twenty-one, twenty-two grants. The base grant, Round Two, is open with a deadline of January thirty-first, which we will apply to. We will request assistance with the city portion of the infrastructure funding for the assisted living and memory care facility. And then we'll also be applying for the five-three-one-zero grant. This is a federal grant that we currently receive for the Hayesville Hustle through the Wichita Transit. It's a two-year grant, and the deadline is February twenty-eighth. And that is all I have for tonight. Do you have any questions for me?
Councilman Crum?
Are we doing anything to try to recruit a physician to come back into town?
That is definitely an ongoing conversation. So, yes.
Okay.
Any other questions from council? Alright, thank you. Alright, next we have F, Park Board Annual Report. Next Recreation Department Annual Report. We have the Senior Center Annual Report, and the Police Department Annual Report. Next we have Item Five, Old Business. We have none. Item Six, Other Business. A, Selection of President of Council. So I will turn this over to Angie.
Excuse me, I will take nominations now for the President of the Council.
Councilperson, Thompson? Councilperson, Harton?
I nominate Barbara Erdens.
Are there any other nominations?
I see none.
Okay. So if you will do a show of hands for who would like to vote for Crum as President of Council? And now for Rarden. Thank you. Rarden will be the president again.
Alright, thank you. Congratulations. Alright, next we have Item B, Consideration of Agreement with Sedgwick County Regarding Civic Ready Notification System. So if a member, a couple minutes ago, the county came and presented this to council, and we have Chief that can answer. Any questions? Any questions? Councilperson, Crum? I'm sorry, councilperson, Harton?
Is this just a one-year agreement, or is it multi-years, or ongoing?
I think the initial MOU is just the agreement between the two, and then I think it's it's subject to year by year, is it not, Josh?
I think so.
I believe it is.
It's continued until the county ceases to use the program, or it's terminated by either of the parties.
Okay.
Councilperson, Crum?
I noticed on the agreement that, of course, because we have voted on it, that the date's left blank right now. Is it ready to go? I mean, as soon as we get into it, or we-
This is just getting the MOU down. The system, to my knowledge, is they're going live very soon with it. They're gonna have, right after they go live, they'll have training for our people here, for our administrators, and then for our message senders. So it should be, should be within the next few months that it would go, go live.
Okay, so we're gonna do the agreement ahead of time before-
Correct.
Just so, so when we sign this, it's not gonna be ready to go, we're still-
That's correct, right.
Okay, thank you.
What would council like to do? Councilperson, Harton?
Make a motion, we accept the agreement.
We have a motion in second to accept the consideration of the agreement with Sedgwick County Regarding the Civic Ready Notification System. Is there any discussion? Question please.
Rarden?
Yes.
Bennett?
Yes.
Harton?
Yes.
Crum?
Yes.
Thompson?
Yes.
Thank you.
Alright, thank you. Next we have Item C, Consideration of Agreement with Diamond Empire Regarding Party in the O-six-O. Yeah, Rob?
Good evening, Mayor and Council. On April twenty-second, we will begin hosting our annual Party in the O-six-O in Rix Park. We are requesting authorization to book the Diamond Empire Band, or Band out of Colorado Springs, to play and provide sound for the event for a total of five-thousand-four-hundred-and-ninety dollars. And this will be paid out of special funds, special events.
Stand for any questions. Councilperson, Harton?
Make a motion, we accept the agreement.
Second.
We have a motion in second to accept the agreement with Diamond Empire. Is there any discussion? Question please.
Rarden?
Yes.
Bennett?
Yes.
Harton?
Yes.
Crum?
Yes.
Thompson?
Yes.
Alright, next we have Item D, Consideration of Agreement with the Hypnosis Events, or-
October twenty-second, we'll be hosting our Fall Festival in Rix Park. We would like to employ the services of Hypnosis Events, the Comedy Hypnosis Show. This would be one of the many acts we put out on our, on our main stage at Fall Fest, for a total of two-thousand-six-hundred-and-fifty dollars.
Councilperson, Harton?
Make a motion, we accept the agreement with Hypnosis Events.
Second.
We have a motion in second to accept the agreement with Hypnosis Events. Is there any discussion? Councilman Crum?
I haven't had a chance to read the fine print or anything on the Hypnosis Events. I'm guessing that they probably do like a PG show?
Yes. Yeah, it'll be G or PG rated.
Okay, thank you.
Some of them get a little crazy, but yeah, it's toned up. Family-friendly event.
Okay, thank you.
That's my first question, too. Alright, so we have motion in second. Any other discussion? Question please.
Rarden?
Yes.
Bennett?
Yes.
Harton?
Yes.
Crum?
Yes.
Thompson?
Yes.
Alright, next we have, excuse me, Item E, Change Order for Wire-Hungerford Waterline Projects.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. Apologize for the late addition of the packet, but we requested a change order for Mies Construction for the Wire in Hungerford Waterline. At the intersection of Fourth and Wire, it was unknown how a twelve-inch and a four-inch water main connected during survey and design. We have since investigated and looking at a change order that either removes and or replaces some of that old line. Ideally, we do not want to leave old water main that was built in nineteen fifty's underneath the road that ties into a brand-new water main. So this change is necessary for the proper function of the water system in that area. We are seeking authorization to approve the change order for Mies Construction in the amount of twenty-three thousand, three hundred dollars, and this will be paid out of ARPA funds. Do they stand for any questions you may have?
Councilman Crum?
So we try to make it so we don't have any water mains under the streets, is what you're saying?
There'll still be water mains underneath the street, they just won't be built in the nineteen fifty's.
Okay.
They'll be in, yeah, now.
So is this gonna cause some, we're gonna have to tear up the street there to strip the old one out, put the new one in, or-
No, so when they void or delete an old water main, they just dig up the connection to the existing water main, so they'll dig up those connection points, just get up the, the actual water main will stay in the ground and just won't be active.
Okay.
If that makes sense. And then we'll probably have a deduct here when they process this change order at Wire and Fourth Street. We're bypassing one of our connections to a twelve-inch water main, so there'll probably be about a three or five thousand dollar deduct that'll be processed with this as well. We just don't have that number right now.
How many more intersections do they have to go through? Is there a chance we could run into this somewhere else?
I asked that question, this was the only one they were concerned with.
Councilperson, Harton?
Make a motion, we accept the change order for twenty-three thousand, three hundred dollars.
We have a motion in second to approve the change order as presented. Is there any discussion? Question please.
Rarden?
Yes.
Bennett?
Yes.
Harton?
Yes.
Crum?
Yes.
Thompson?
Yes, thank you.
Next we have Item Seven, Department Reports. A, Administrative Services, Georgia?
I don't have anything.
Item B, City Clerk, Angie?
I just needed to inform you that city offices will be closed on Monday, January sixteenth, for Martin Luther King Day. If there are any water or sewer emergencies, please call five-two-nine, five-nine-one-two. Thank you.
Thank you. Next we have Police, Chief?
Good evening, Mayor and Council. Tonight, our visiting officer is Officer Jordan Corbett. He is currently assigned to our night shift, so say hi to him as you go by out there. Also, just wanted to remind everybody that they're still taking enrollments for the SERC classes coming up at the end of the month, which is January twenty-seventh through twenty-ninth. It's a Friday night, Saturday, and Sunday afternoon, so if you want to sign up for that, please do. Thank you.
Thank you. Next we have Public Works, Tony?
The Christmas tree recycling that we have just north of Public Works at four oh one South Jane will be open till January seventeenth. After that, citizens will need to bring Christmas trees, if they still have them, to the recycling center. We do ask that you please take off all the ornaments, decorations, and fake snow. So, thank you.
Thank you. Next we have Recreation, Rob?
Good evening, Mayor and Council. The Hayesville Activity Center is taking, now taking registration for our Daddy Daughter Event. It's in its twenty-second year. Mother-Sun Nerf Wars. Youth Soccer Registration will begin on January sixteenth, and our Baseball and Softball Registration will begin on February sixth. Thank you.
Thank you. Next we have Item Eight, Appointments. We'll be appointing people individually. Councilman Crum?
Are you starting A?
I am starting A.
Okay. So I'll make a motion that we approve Brooke Aziers to seat four for the remainder of term to the Library Board.
Second. We have a motion in second to approve Brooke Azier to, for, to seat four for the Library Board for the remainder of the term. Is there any discussion? Question please.
Rarden?
Yes.
Bennett?
Yes.
Harton?
Yes.
Crum?
Yes.
Thompson?
Yes.
Next we have Item B, Sedgwick County Fire District Number One Steering Committee, Justin Brewster for a two-year term. He's actually in the audience also. So this is the, if you remember, the county proposed to have a steering committee, and the City of Hayesville was giving, was given one seat to the steering committee. So, and they approved it, I believe, last month, and so Justin is the, who I'm recommending for approval. Councilperson, Harton?
I make a motion, we approve Justin Brewster for the two-year term with Sedgwick County Fire District Number One Steering Council.
Second.
We have a motion in second to approve Justin Brewster to be on the Fire District Number One Steering Committee for a two-year term. Is there any discussion? Question please.
Rarden?
Yes.
Bennett?
Yes.
Harton?
Yes.
Crum?
Yes.
Thompson?
Yes.
Next we have Item C, Municipal Judge, Terry Beal. Councilman?
Make a motion, we appoint Terry Beal for Municipal Judge. Second.
We have a motion in second to appoint Terry Beal as Municipal Judge. Is there any discussion? Question please.
Rarden?
Yes.
Bennett?
Yes.
Harton?
Yes.
Crum?
Yes.
Thompson?
Yes.
Next Item D, City Attorney, Josh Pollak. Councilperson, Harton?
I make a motion, we, we approve, appoint Josh Pollak for City Attorney.
Second.
We have a motion in second to appoint Josh as a City Attorney. Any discussion? Question please.
Rarden?
Yes.
Bennett?
Yes.
Harton?
Yes.
Crum?
Yes.
Thompson?
Yes.
Next we have City Prosecutor, Denise Donley Mills. Councilperson, Harton?
Let's appoint Denise Donley Mills, City Prosecutor.
Second.
We have a motion in second to appoint Denise Donley Mills as City Prosecutor. Is there any discussion? Question please.
Rarden?
Yes.
Bennett?
Yes.
Harton?
Yes.
Crum?
Yes.
Thompson?
Yes.
Next we have Chief Administrative Officer, Will Black. Councilman Crum?
I make a motion that we appoint Will Black to Chief Administrative Officer.
Second.
We have a motion in second to appoint Will Black as the Chief Administrative Officer. Any discussion? Question please.
Rarden?
Yes.
Bennett?
Yes.
Harton?
Yes.
Crum?
Yes.
Thompson?
Yes.
Next we have Deputy Administrative Officer, Georgia Carter. Councilman Bennett?
Make a motion, we appoint Georgia Carter as Deputy Administrative Officer. Second.
We have a motion in second to appoint Georgia Carter as the Deputy Administrative Officer. Any discussion? Question please.
Rarden?
Yes.
Bennett?
Yes.
Harton?
Yes.
Crum?
Yes.
Thompson?
Yes.
Next we have Angie Millsap for City Clerk Treasure. Councilman Crum?
Make a motion that we appoint Angie Millsap as our, Millsap, as our City Clerk Treasure.
Are you really running?
Second.
We have a motion in second to appoint Angie Millsap as a City Clerk Treasure. Any discussion? Question please.
Rarden?
Yes.
Bennett?
Yes.
Harton?
Yes.
Crum?
Yes.
Thompson?
Yes.
Next is Chief of Police, Jeff Woodfield. Councilman Bennett?
Make a motion, we appoint Jeff Woodfield as Chief of Police. Second.
We have a motion in second to appoint Jeff Woodfield as Chief of Police. Any discussion? Councilperson, Harton? Question please.
Rarden?
Yes.
Bennett?
Yes.
Hartons?
Yes.
Crum?
Yes.
Thompson?
Yes.
Next we have Public Works Director, Tony Martinez. Councilperson, Harton?
A, Motion, we approve Tony Martinez as the Public Works Director.
Second.
We have a motion in second to appoint Tony Martinez as the Public Works Director. Any discussion? Question please.
Rarden?
Yes.
Bennett?
Yes.
Harton?
Yes.
Crum?
Yes.
Thompson?
Yes.
Next we have Rob Arneson as Recreation Director. Councilperson, Harton?
Make a motion, we approve Rob Arneson as Recreation Director.
Second.
We have a motion in second to appoint Rob Arneson as Recreation Director. Any discussion? Question please.
Rarden?
Yes.
Bennett?
Yes.
Harton?
Yes.
Crum?
Yes.
Thompson?
Yes.
Y'all are stuck for another year.
Congratulations, all the appointees. Alright, next we have Item Nine, Off Agenda Citizens to Be Heard. Are there any citizens that would like to be heard?
Hey, he's running.
He's got another meeting? I see none coming forward. Item Ten, Executive Session, we have none scheduled. Item Eleven, Review of Expenditures. Councilperson, Harton?
Make a motion, we review and file the expenditures.
Second.
There are none, there are none listed for this meeting. We did those at last meeting in December.
Well, see?
I, I take that back.
Next we have Item Twelve, Consent Agenda. We have two items on the consent agenda. Councilman Crum?
I make a motion that we approve the consent agenda as presented.
Second.
We have a motion in second to approve the consent agenda as presented. Is there any discussion? Question please.
Rarden?
Yes.
Bennett?
Yes.
Harton?
Yes.
Crum?
Yes.
Thompson?
Yes.
Next we have Item, Item Thirteen, Council Items. A, Council Concerns. Councilman Crum?
I just tried to get us out of here. No, I, I don't know, I guess this was the month for me to notice things that are off-kilter a little bit. Do we know that the clock face that faces south is not, twelve o'clock is about fifty-eight, I would guess? And I'll give, that was my twenty-one-year-old son, Damon, noticed that. He brought that to my attention. He goes, "How long's that been like that?" I was like- I'm not sure how you fix that. The west side, the west crosswalk light, the one on the west side that faces east, most of the time, the flashing yellow lights, you kind of have them tilted toward traffic. And the one that faces east actually tilts away from traffic. It's kind of aimed toward the veterinarian business. I have time to sit there and look at that stuff. That's all I got.
Any other council members have a concern?